I call the regular meeting of the Eugene School Board to order on Wednesday, October 19th, 2022 at 7:04 PM. Board members are attending virtually tonight. Here with me are Kirti Hasija Kaufman, Alicia Hayes, Michelle Shu, Judy Newman, Laurel O'Rourke, and myself, Maya Rabasa. Please join Superintendent Dai as he leads us in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Superintendent Dai. Now I will read the land acknowledgement. The Eugene School Board would like to acknowledge that our institution sits on the homelands of the Kalapuaia people. In the treaties of 1851 and 1854 to 1855, and the subsequent forced removals of many Indian people from western Oregon, some of the Kalapuaia were moved to the Grand Ronde Reservation and some were moved to the Syllets Reservation. It is important to note that all of Lane County was and continues to be an important trading and gathering area for camis and other resources. During the Restoration Era from 1977 to 1989, Lane County was designated as the service area for the Confederated Tribes of Kus, Lower Umquah, and Tsayusla Indians, the Confederated Tribes of Grand Ronde Indians, the Confederated Tribes of Syllets Indians, the Coquill Indian Tribe, and the Cow Creek Band of Umquah Indians. Eugene School District 4J acknowledges that the descendants of original and service area inhabitants of this land are still here today. They are thriving members of our schools and our communities. Countless members of other tribes now also call our community and schools their home. We wish to thank those original stewards of this land. We, as fellow stewards of this land, wish to remember that we need to take good care of this land and take good care of all members of our school district community. To begin with, we have an agenda review. Are there any questions, changes, or corrections to the agenda anyone would like to request? Laurel?
I would like to add or request to add a change to the agenda to change committee assignments.
So would you like to make a motion?
I would like to make a motion to add that to the agenda.
Do we need a second?
I'm having a mute issue. Is that as an item for action, future action information?
As an item for action, I don't think it needs to go on and on.
Okay, is there a second? Judy, okay, so Laurel moves to reassign committees as an item for action, is that correct Laurel?
Correct.
Seconded by Judy, is there any discussion? No? Okay, all those in favor of adding to the agenda the reassignment of committees as an action item, raise your hand and leave your hand raised. Okay, I see four people raising their hand. I see Laurel O'Rourke, Judy Newman, Kirti Hasija Kaufman, and Alicia Hayes voting in favor. All those opposed, raise your hand. I see Maya Rabasa and Michelle Shu. Okay, we have, we will add to item for action, the reassignment of committees. Next on the agenda is the, oh, I'm sorry, is there, are there any other items that should be changed, moved, corrections? Okay, I would like to make a motion to remove item, item for action number three, which is to consider for approval Board Resolution 2023-07 School Emergency Response Plan. I can give a little more information if anybody would like to make a second. Okay, I see Judy raised her hand, so moved by Maya Rabasa and seconded by Judy is the removal of item for action number three. We will have discussion now and I'll just jump in and explain. On June 17th, 2020, the Board adopted policy EBC/EBCA, Emergency Procedures and Disastrous Plans. This policy precludes the Board from having to make a resolution regarding the School Emergency Response Plan as the policy itself mandates exactly this, rendering this action unnecessary. I see you have your hand raised and I also saw Superintendent Dai, your hand flashed. So Laurel, if you would like to start, or Andy, if you want to jump in?
Go right ahead Laurel.
Go ahead Laurel.
My, well, my question is, does that mean, when you said it precludes this, does that mean that it is, that everything is a go, a go as far as the security response plan? And it's the, we don't, we just do not have to do the authorization to do that, for Andy to do that? It's already been done?
The resolution was a declaration that there would be an emergency plan in place and the policy itself already mandates that, so the resolution would be redundant. But I'll let, Andy? Yes, please.
Yeah, I would add for your benefit and that of the listening audience that we already have an emergency operations plan in place. Our work over the last several years has been to conduct audits to see how to improve safety and security throughout our schools. Because of policy EBC, it would really be a redundancy. You have already instructed the superintendent as a board to ensure that there is an emergency operation plan in place and we are in the process of adopting standard response protocols and doing some of the work that our recent safety audits have asked us or have suggested improvements in our schools. And we're, we're in the process of going, going about that as we speak. So, so really, and my apologies to the Board, the considering creating a resolution was without the knowledge that in, in 2020, that the Board formally adopted a policy mandating that that be the case.
Are there any other questions or discussion? Okay, all those in favor of removing item for action number three, the consideration for approval of Board Resolution for School Emergency Response Plans, raise your hand and say aye. Okay, I see one, two, three, four, five, six hands raised. That would be Maya Rabasa, Judy Newman, Kirti Hasija Kaufman, Michelle Shu, Alicia Hayes, and Laurel O'Rourke. And that passes unanimously, unanimously, so we will remove that item from the items for action. The next item on the attend, on the agenda is introduction of guests and superintendent's report. Andy, yes?
Gordon not here yet, should be waiting? Had, has there been any contact?
Yeah, he's getting in and Lisa, I believe, is sending him another link.
Does he, would he, could somebody ask if we, he would like us to wait?
Sure. We'll give it a minute or two. Link has been sent, he should be able to get in any second. Thank you to the listening audience for bearing with us as we bring Gordon in. There we go. Welcome Gordon. Gordon, just to catch you up, we have added to the agenda the reassigning of committee reports and we have removed from the agenda the consideration of the emergent, the School Emergency Plan. If you have any questions, you can answer them or we can, okay, great, thank you. The next thing on the agenda is introduction of guests and superintendent's report. So now Superintendent Dai, you have the floor.
Thank you Madam Chair, members of the Board and listening audience. This evening, I'd like to start with a point of pride that we work with an incredible team of individuals that looks to support our community wherever possible. You may be aware of a significant multi-vehicle collision on I-5 earlier today that brought I-5 traffic to a halt for a considerable amount of time. Recognizing that there were many individuals stranded on the interstate uninjured but whose vehicles were undrivable, agency partners at the Oregon Department of Transportation and the Oregon State Police reached out to 4J's transportation team and asked for some assistance. Our staff swiftly responded with a yes and sent two buses to the scene to transport stranded individuals to a safe location. I am so grateful for partners in our work across our system who routinely respond with a yes when working to support the needs of our students and our community as a whole. Additionally, reflecting on one of the key rocks on which we are grounding our work this year, meaningful community engagement. When engagement's mentioned, we each have our own vision of what that might look like, framed through our own experiences of both effective and less effective instances. However, I'd imagine if we asked people, folks to describe engagement, each of us would paint a similar but slightly different picture, which is precisely the point, everyone engages differently. The insights that I've gained through the over 100 chats scheduled with folks from the community continue to influence the next chapter of open door opportunities here at the district office. The voices of our community and teammates provide a foundation for areas that we will need to delve deeper into to collaboratively solve challenges in service of our students and families. Moving through the year, engagement must be central to our decision-making processes. The ability to connect with individuals in a, in the way that is most meaningful to them will continue to have a significant impact on student outcomes and services to families. Our district is already building engagement into the way in which we process our work. Some examples are cross-district team gathering to evaluate possible changes to the secondary schedules, staff moving forward on plans to implement state interviews that will give voice to issues directly impacting our day-to-day work. We've embarked on an audit, in fact, of how our district communicates. This will include internal and external questioning along with small group discussions with key stakeholders that we, on ways that we may miss the mark in effectively communicating what we're doing and gathering information from the community. Teams are building a roadmap for engagement as it relates to planning and allocation of state funding for the upcoming biennium. Developed a library dream team, as we're calling it, to influence conversations around library services throughout the district. Examples also include working with our buildings to ensure that we are thoughtfully inviting volunteers back into our buildings, along with providing the resources to swiftly process applications so that that's not a barrier to families and the schools. And your work as a board in increasing involvement in the budget process and thoughtfully redesigning the Equity Advisory Committee and other very important tasks that we're going to undertake over the course of the year. The entire district and I will continue to infuse collaboration and meaningful engagement into our process at the district office and provide support for our buildings to access the written richness of community engagement that characterizes Eugene. Really appreciate everyone's support for the district and the work that our hard-working staff are doing. Thank you very much.
Thank you Superintendent Dai. The next item on the agenda is items raised by the audience. We have five speakers this evening, I am told. The School Board receives written comments by email at board@4j.lane.edu and sets aside time in each regular Board meeting to hear public comment. Community members can sign up to speak to the Board by submitting the request online at 4j.lane.edu/Board/publiccomment or contact the superintendent's office. The deadline is the Monday before each meeting. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes and cannot give their time to another speaker. While community members are speaking, a timer will be visible on the screen and will count up to indicate when three minutes have passed. Speakers may offer objective comments or criticism about district operations and programs. For complaints about individuals, the district has a Board Policy and Complaint Process. Please contact the superintendent's office at 541-790-7707 for more information about submitting a formal complaint. Tonight, we have five speakers who are signed up to speak and Debbie will be ushering in the speakers one at a time.
Thank you Madam Chair, we have five speakers tonight. First, we'll have Miles Rowe Pendleton, followed by Marilyn Keller.
Greetings, when do I begin? Do we go now? Okay, awesome. Well, greetings everybody, it is joy to join you here. My name is Miles Pendleton, I serve as President of the Eugene Springfield Branch of the NAACP. I come before you all today to strongly urge you all's support of this Measure 114. I know there's a proposed resolution on the agenda for today's action items and so really want to strongly encourage you all to support that in the positive direction. Measure 114 is a piece of legislation that truly does work towards a greater environment and a greater landscape for equity. It is a measure that has been considered, that has been poured into, that has been written, authored, rewritten, through numerous different iterations, numerous conversations from BIPOC as well as otherwise marginalized community members. It is a measure that, when we talk about equity, right, and this idea of activity but also self-enfranchisement, it is a measure that has come to us by virtue of BIPOC community members who see that as we talk about gun legislation reform, as we talk about gun violence in an Oregon context, while every single sector and every single corner of Oregon has been impacted, impacted and fractured in some degree at the hands of gun violence, certainly it is our BIPOC community members who are most disproportionately impacted across the Board, across the various different forms of gun violence. And so in that regard, the status quo is inequitable, the status quo is inequity, and so remaining in this given state in this given moment, just further marginalize our community members. It puts Black and Brown and BIPOC communities bodies on the lines and unfortunately, it does lead to the continued violence and unfortunately, in the worst circumstances, deaths of our BIPOC community members. So I would strongly implore you all to support this, to stand in strongly here, send a clear resounding message that 4J School Board is one that promotes equity, is one that promotes child safety, is one that promotes community safety, and most importantly, one, community safety rooted in equity. Again, the measure includes a number of different stopgap mechanisms to ensure that it is done equitably, it still has yet to go through a full thorough implementation project, process where the Oregon Legislature will review it and ask this essential question of how do we implement gun violence reform in an equitable way? And what we've seen unfortunately is that all too often in Salem, the Oregon Legislature, if we're talking about a non-petition-based ballot measure, just bringing a bill idea or building, bringing a bill concept up to the Oregon State Legislature, several times over the last several years, those bills have not even gotten a hearing. And so this measure, voting yes on it, voting in support of it, would in fact also allow us the opportunity to really force a conversation on the equitable implementation of gun legislation reform and gun violence reduction statewide. So I thank you all, I greatly appreciate your time, look forward to talking more about this. And if any School Board members, if any members of the community have a question, please do reach out to us, our branch will be more than happy to talk.
Thank you Miles. Debbie, who do we have coming up next?
We have Marilyn Keller, she should be ready to go next.
I am, thank you very much Debbie. My name is Marilyn Keller, I am one of the three chief petitioners on ballot Measure 114, which entered the ballot as Petition 17. For the past four years, we have been working as a faith-based and secular-based organization of justice seekers seeking to get gun reform on the, the election ballot. And at every turn, we have been met with opposition by the gun lobby, mostly backed by NRA misrepresentations of what we're trying to do. This ballot measure does not infringe upon anyone's Second Amendment rights, it does not keep anyone from purchasing a gun that wants to and needs to have a gun for their personal safety or for their personal use. My job as the third petitioner, as I came into this position, was as the artist-in-residence for Lift Every Voice Oregon. We held several educational opportunities over the last four years for youth and adults to get together and, and educational forum virtually because of the pandemic that we were involved in, to find out exactly what these, these petitions would bring to bear on the, the situation that we've been facing with law enforcement and also personal gun ownership, bringing, just wreaking violence upon our communities. I have been involved with information exchange with several members of our BIPOC community across the state and across the nation now, and it is time for us to get this ballot measure passed. We have the, the mandate that was given with the 161,585 signatures that we received to get it on the ballot. And we also have a very, very diverse leadership and volunteer base that is now up to 2,000 members across the state. Again, my, my trance right now, I'd like to take and give you an idea of what we have been working on and what I have been doing as a member of the Petition Committee. Lift every voice and sing till earth and heaven ring, ring with the harmonies of liberty. Let our rejoicing rise high as the listening skies, let it resound loud as the rolling sea. That is the first half of the first stanza of the Black National Anthem, Lift Every Voice and Sing, written by James Weldon and Rosamund Johnson. We choice Lift Every Voice as our title for our political action committee and we are lifting every voice in Oregon. Anyone who thinks that we are not working on behalf of people of color, people who have been marginalized throughout the, the situations with our Supreme Court rulings, with state rulings that have been coming down, you need to go to our page, lifteveryvoiceoregon.com and read the ballot measure for yourself. It is written very well and succinctly. It will cause no one to have any problems to get a permit and a license to own and operate a weapon if they so choose. If you are caping for what we call the opposition and saying that this ballot measure is racist and it will cause people of color to have difficulty getting a permit, they will not have any difficulty because it uses the same criteria that they have to go through to get a concealed permit to carry and for any other licensing procedure that, that happens in the state. If there are any questions, again, you can reach me through lifteveryvoiceoregon.com or you can get in contact with me through my own personal email, which is dupipes@al.com.
Thank you so much Marilyn, I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you Ms. Keller. Up next, we have Pamela Heard, followed by Jess Rochack.
Can you guys hear and see me now? Hello?
Yes, we can, go ahead.
Hi.
Thank you.
Ms. Keller, that was amazing, thank you for that. Hi, I'm Pam Heard and I have three kids in 4J schools. First off, I want to thank all of you here and the others who keep our schools working well. I definitely don't want to convey that you're doing something wrong. I've come here today to discuss the backlog of volunteer applications. At the end of my comments, the key takeaway is that I want to help and I know many others who would like to as well. As far as I understand, there are currently thousands of volunteer applications waiting to be processed. It is taking months to move people through the system and those systems have changed. To my knowledge, there are also limited people who can help. To address the issue on our end, we've had people sending notifications that there's a significant backlog and the parents need to apply early in order to volunteer. From a personal side, I sent my application before summer started and it hasn't been processed. I'm not pointing fingers, I'm trying to help, I promise. The event that I'm personally anxious about is Oregon Battle of the Books. In order to make that happen, we rely on parent volunteers. We don't start doing battles until February, but I'm hitting the panic button now because if I do, the math and my application has been waiting since summer and it's October, it's very unlikely that a parent that applies now is going to be able to get their application processed in order to be able to help us. I don't want this program to falter simply because we can't get volunteers approved. On a broader level, I know our teachers need help in their classrooms. There are myriad events that require volunteer assistance. The backlog speaks volumes to those needs and people's desire to step up. The way I was raised was that if I chose to bring up a problem, I better be ready to help with a solution. I'm here and I want to help. If you need people to help with the backlog, I know I can rally the troops. You have volunteers ready to help the volunteers. How could I help? That's all I have to say, thanks you guys.
Thank you Pam.
Thank you, next we have Jess Rochack.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you, go ahead.
There's another pandemic, I'm sorry. 15% of 4J students are affected and they're more likely to suffer anxiety, depression, twice as likely to face unemployment, more likely to face adjudication, and poverty increases these outcomes. It's called dyslexia, which is fully treatable in schools. Caught early using the recommended treatment methods, the prognosis for dyslexics can be very, very good. It might shock you that 95% of students are capable of reading proficiently with the proper instruction. It's become the biggest social justice issue of our time. Accessing appropriate literacy instruction, in my opinion, is a civil right and courts have agreed. Dyslexia is an SLD that falls under the umbrella of the IDEA. It's quite simply a brain difference from mild to profound necessitating explicit, intensive, multisensory literacy instruction. Surprisingly, there's enough kids with dyslexia in 4J to overflow the entire Halt Center. Most here are undiagnosed, believing themselves always to be poor readers, spellers, writers, or just not smart. They're often great at hiding their silent disability with other intelligences, they don't know it's due to a brain difference called dyslexia. They internalize the blame. They don't know it's due to a brain difference called dyslexia. They internalize the blame and shame on themselves instead of for the system they've been allowed to slip through. Advice received often at school is like work harder at spelling, practice reading more, pay more attention. These aren't helpful for dyslexics. My son, professionally diagnosed two years ago, has never in four and a half years been offered remediation at school and in fourth is now too old to receive foundations. Since he's not at a Title I school, we're told there's no help available. It was a district admin who'd never met him who passed the tie-breaking vote, denying him in-school services. Why are we really waiting for students with diagnosed learning disabilities to fail or get lawyers to help them with appropriate reading instruction? It's why many opt out to homeschool, I am sure. Our tax resources have been tied up defending a broken status quo system and gatekeeping with expensive district lawyers. Please help prepare a budget that redirects resources to give all students access to appropriate instruction they need in the first place. Foundations for K three this year and grant-funded letters training is a first step. It's good. Many students will benefit. But so much more must be done at our schools for our dyslexic students, not just at Title I schools, not just in certain grades. All students need to be understood by staff trained in dyslexia to correctly identify them and to give the right interventions. Literacy is the backbone of a healthy, socially just, democratic community. And this particular pandemic really can end with the right decisions by leaders like you in this room. October is dyslexia and dysgraphia awareness month, so keep spreading the word and please get to work. Thank you.
Thank you, Jess.
Thank you. And our last speaker tonight is Harry Sanger. And Harry should be ready to go. Are you there, Mr. Sanger?
Yeah, it's just taking me a minute to join as a panelist here. Right. So I I really don't have an agenda. I'd like to avoid having an agenda. I've tried to to avoid speaking as much this year as last year and give the board the space to to perform successfully. And I and I'd really like to congratulate the board on sticking to agendas and getting the business of the meetings done in the meeting instead of preparing for the meeting in the meeting. I'd also like to to acknowledge Superintendent Dye reaching out to to the community and really hearing, having having sessions and ability to dialogue with the community. With that said, I I think I speak for a lot of parents who don't have a voice on this board, that that their voice is just not being heard in the community. And they do believe that CRT is in our schools, whether you call it CRT or not, that there's there's a racial bias that's replacing the old racial bias with a new racial bias instead of removing
Point of order.
as we should be doing. They also believe that the CSE that's being taught in our schools is not age-appropriate, is not appropriate topics. And I I would like to see the board avoid getting into these political ideologies and and take care of the basics of educating our children. I think that the the inclusion of last year's event at North Eugene High School that brought a drag event that promoted a specific
Point of order, Chair.
That
Point of order means stop the meeting because there's discrimination happening. I am not going to sit through this discrimination this year from Harry Sanger.
So I'm I'm literally asking for us to avoid discriminating.
Point of order.
Laurel, I think that Harry, it looks like Harry is frozen.
Because they're labeled as discriminatory before they have a chance to dialogue and speak. The
No.
I believe that the board's actions have led to an environment that is now reaching a powder keg that I am aware
Point of order is a
of groups on the left and groups on the right.
Rules that says we must stop the meeting.
I'm aware of groups on the left
We have
Is this by three minutes or is it not?
discriminatory and racial harassment. And this is, I will not stand for this in this meeting.
We we also have rules around the freedom of speech, and I am going to let Harry finish.
But you are not a lawyer. And so you're wanting his freedom of speech, which has been now derogatory against people that have are dressed differently and have different sexual orientation and against black people. You're saying that is more valuable than me being in this meeting.
So, Ms. O'Rourke, if you would please let me
So I'm not talking to you, Harry. I'm talking to my chair.
Right, Laurel. And the point of order brings it to me to make the decision, and I would like Harry to just finish so we can move along with the meeting.
No, the point of order means the board decides.
No, point of order means that I decide.
So thank you for deciding for for discrimination and for Harry Sanger.
So Laurel, I believe Robert's Rules of Order states that you can request a vote if you disagree with the board chair's ruling. Okay.
Looks like left the meeting. Please add thirty seconds, Harry, and then let's wrap it up.
I'll try to wrap it up, Chair Bobbs. So the really what I'm trying to ask, though, tonight, there's a powder keg about to erupt in Eugene this weekend. There there's an event being held at Old Nick's on Sunday that has already threats of armed activists, I believe, on both sides of the aisle coming out. I'd like to see this diffused. I'd like to see people not show up and make an event out of this. And I would I would really like for the board to speak to that as well and ask people not to show up and create a problem where we don't need one in our community. And I I only have the voice I have here. I really appreciate the voice that the board has. I think you're very influential in the community and that, yeah, I would like to avoid discrimination of any sort. And, you know, that means hearing from people from both sides, but in the appropriate venues and forums where that should happen. So, thank you.
Very. Um, I appreciate you wrapping it up. I just want to note that the legal advice we have been given as of now is that we are not interrupting people from speaking unless they are inciting using what the Supreme Court has referred to as fighting words, and I am going to stick with having allowed Harry to finish speaking. That was our last speaker. Thank you to the community members who chose to spend time with us tonight and share their thoughts. The next item on the agenda is comments by employee groups. I believe tonight we have one employee group. We have Eugene Education Association here to speak with us. And I think Sabrina is on her way. I see her now. Sabrina, you have a reply.
Thank you, Maya. Thanks for the time to speak tonight. My name is Sabrina Gordon, and I am president of Eugene Education Association. I didn't use my time last week because I was so overwhelmed by the number of requests coming from educators across the district for help with students, supporting students with emotional and behavioral needs. And I just honestly didn't know where to start to speak with you last week. But we have to start somewhere. So tonight I'll begin by sharing a few quotes from emails, texts, and conversations that often include tears received by EEA over the last few weeks. "From a special education teacher at an elementary school after her classroom was torn apart by a student, I really love my job, but I just don't think I can do this anymore." "From a second-grade classroom teacher, I feel awful because I ducked out of the way when a student threw an iPad at me and it hit two other students." "From a middle school social studies teacher, I never take my break because some students count on my classroom as a quiet place to hide from chaos in the hallways." "From a first-grade teacher, staff are afraid to come to work." EEA is also starting to hear from parents who are reaching out in search of help, asking what requests, what educators need to make our classrooms feel safe. One parent recently shared that her daughter requested earplugs because the constant screaming from an upset student is making her anxious. Another parent called in tears today because her child was hit with a chair during one of three room clears. Her tears were not only for her own child, but for the child who threw the chair, for all the students who witnessed it, and for the teacher. I know that educators are reaching out to four J admin and the board for help. They're asking for help because we recognize both the immediate and long-term impacts of this situation. Our students are experiencing and witnessing trauma daily in our classrooms. The ability to focus on academic learning targets does not exist while this crisis of emotional and behavioral needs continues. Students need our help now to feel safe at school and to avoid missing large amounts of learning time. Educators are asking for three things. One, clearly communicated, student-centered behavior support systems. Two, dedicated time for school staffs to focus on behavior supports, which means temporarily clearing other demands off our plates. And three, adequate staffing to support students' needs, which means filling empty positions and adding more educational assistants and licensed staff, not more administrators. And as I often try to do, I'll end with a look on the bright side. What educators are asking for aligns well with four J's big box. Timely communication, a coordinated cohesive focus on equitable access for all. And last, but absolutely most important, safety and well-being for all students and staff. Four J's educators are passionate, dedicated, and willing to go above and beyond to meet the needs of all students. And when we communicate with the board and district admin about what our students need, we count on you to provide it. Thank you.
Thank you, Sabrina. Next, we have comments and committee reports by individual board members. Is anybody ready to go?
Okay.
Dorothy, thank you.
Hey, I just figured I'd go first today. I missed last week's meeting because I was unwell, and I know everybody's been having a lot of issues, both with the stress and the smoke. So I just wanted to send well wishes out to everyone who's dealing with a very stressful start to the year. And Sabrina, thanks for sharing those. It it's really saddening considering how the positive note that you started the year on to see just in October where it has come from since the beginning of September, a month and a half into the school year. So just hearing those, hoping that we're all hearing those and taking those into account and focusing on those comments and the children in the classroom and the teachers who are working with them as the the front of our minds every time we're going into these meetings and these conversations. I did want to say I didn't get a chance last time. We did have our first legislative committee with Judy. Thanks for putting those pieces together. Looking forward to your kind of seeing what ways that we're able to work with our state legislator and and supporting our school district. There's a very important, obviously, election coming up, which has very, very significant ramifications for what our district may experience and what the state may experience. So please go out. I know voter pamphlets went out this week, so those on there. I did want to say in the last month, I did get a chance to go to the Chinese immersion school to Moon Festival. Some Michelle there. And then I also got to attend the National Hispanic Heritage Event at River Road, put on by our equity committee. And I just wanted to say it was just a very heartening celebration of community from people that I don't think have been able to get together in that kind of a space in the last two years since the pandemic. And just seeing a celebration of multiple Hispanic cultures and having communities able to participate in a way with food craft, bringing in their things on there. It was just, I mean, it was just a really nice way to showcase. I think just just places that I my my kids don't even get a chance to see that in a in a space on a regular basis. So I I really appreciated that, and I appreciated the work that went in from our equity staff that put that together because there was a lot of sponsorship that went into that, and there was a lot of coordination on there. So I just wanted to say thank you to the team and then for looking forward to the hard work that you guys are putting together. So it's my few cents for the night.
Thank you, Dorothy. Gordon?
Thank you. I also also appreciate Sabrina Gordon's comments. And and I think like other people know, this is one of the highest priority issues we need to address. I don't have committee reports to make. I do want to report on something that I've talked about before, which is that employees of Warehouser in Eugene and Springfield, who include both four J graduates and parents, have been on strike now for more than a month. The wooden timber industry is one of the most important industries in our state and one of the industries that we count on to provide jobs for our graduates, at which they can support their families in dignity. We now have an extremely profitable company that has forced people out on strike by because of wanting to cut their health insurance benefits. And I just wanted to let the public know that this Friday at eleven thirty in the morning in Springfield, the national president of the of the AFL-CAO, of the National American Labor Movement, Liz Schuler, who is also an Oregonian and U of O graduate, will be in Springfield, joining Warehouser employees on strike. It's this Friday, eleven thirty, at eleven sixteen South A Street in Springfield. Or you can see the announcement also on my Facebook page. The last thing I want to mention is about the Drag Queen Storytime Event coming up at Old Nick's, which I I think is what Harry Sanger was referring to. And I want to be totally clear that I am not putting words in Harry's mouth or anybody else's. I understood Harry to be calling for tolerance and nondiscrimination. But if this has been an event of controversy, I just want to say this is a voluntary event that everyone is invited to and no one is required to attend. If there are people whose position is that no one should be allowed to hold this kind of event, that people who dress in drag and those who appreciate that should be banned or made illegal or prohibited from appearing in public, that's not opposing discrimination. That's a very active form of discrimination. If, in fact, there are people threatening to show up with guns at this event, I hope that the Eugene Police Department will show up to protect the right of anyone who wants to perform in drag and anyone who wants to come participate in that event to do so in peace and without fear. Thank you.
Thank you, Gordon. Michelle?
Related to what Gordon had just mentioned, from what I understand, it's a storytime. And this has become a fun and colorful event for kids in lots of library communities where they can be entertained and listen to stories. And it's performance and fun. So I'm all for any kind of storytime. And since we just had a meeting last week, I don't have a whole lot to add except that I attended the fifteenth night event last week. And it was held at South Eugene High School. And for anyone who is not familiar with fifteenth night, they're committed to sheltering youth. Their their organization is based on the research that shows that youths who are unhoused for longer than two weeks are more likely to experience chronic housing insecurity. And they're doing whatever they can to prevent a fifteenth night of homelessness for youth. They also strongly believe that no student should have to drop out of school due to homelessness. One of the highlights was hearing that they have a youth action council. And they're instrumental to the success of the program. They have expanded to all the high schools in our district. They started in one of them. And now they're in Springfield, Bethel, and they're continuing to grow. And it was it was really a lovely, heartwarming event with lots of community, so many organizations and government groups and businesses and volunteers and students. I mean, I I couldn't possibly name them all. But it just shows what this community can do. And yeah, it was great. Thanks.
Thanks, Michelle. Judy.
Thank you. First of all, thank you for it's really heartening. First of all, to hear about all the events that are really happening again and the incredible community we live in, you know, from, you know, the moon celebration to the fifteenth night, which has been a great and amazing growing initiative. And and I'm really proud of all the our involvement as a school district, but amazed by all the work that's been done and the events around Hispanic Heritage Month. So it's pretty, it feels like we're heading into a more normal time and that feels good. And also I want to thank so many of the people who testified tonight. I thought it was moving and also helpful. The parent who talked about volunteers, I really appreciate the concrete offers to help and and solutions as well as Sabrina talking about been very aware of what's going on in the schools and offering some really concrete solutions that I know our leadership team and schools hopefully will start, you know, work. I'm sure they've been working hard together on these issues. So I just want to also say I'm really looking forward to the five K and fun run that's happening this Sunday at Alton Baker Park. It's the first annual E E F all district gathering and the funds raised go to our students for engaging in creative learning opportunities. So please, please join E E F and our four J community this Sunday, nine thirty at Alton Baker for the fun run. It starts at nine thirty and the five K is at ten, or just come hang out. I think it's a nice gathering. There'll be community booths, people there with information and you'll see a lot of your friends and and colleagues. So that would be great. And I know it might be a little bit wet, but the air should really be cleaner, which I'm glad about. And I don't think it'll dampen the fun. So Dorothy already mentioned that our legislative committee met this week on Monday and we're planning and preparing for our January breakfast with legislators. So this involves first step of identifying our priorities for this coming session. So we want to alert all the my fellow board members to watch for an email. We're going to send it out tomorrow or Friday, so in the next two days. And please complete the doodle poll so we can schedule our breakfast. We need to hear from you and to send us your top three priorities for this session. In addition to funding, working on stable funding is going to be a given. So we ask you to add things that you want on top of that. And please respond promptly so we can get planning. Also, each board member has received a document titled Priorities and Principles for the twenty twenty-three Legislative Session. These were identified by the Legislative Policy Committee at OSBA. We'll be discussing these and deciding whether or not to support them as a board. So I just encourage you to look at them. And last, but not least, I want to urge everyone to vote on November eighth. It the election's important. It's less than three weeks away. So if you haven't already received your ballot, please be looking for it in the next couple of days. And there definitely going to be changes in Oregon. You know, some elect there's there's new people that are going to be in office and the results will be very important to every Oregonian, especially for our future generation, which is our students and our children. So please vote. Thank you.
Thanks, Judy. Alicia.
Thanks, Maya. Actually, just wanted to say thank you, Sabrina, for the stories and the part that you touched on with the letter about the, I think it was a mom who talked about her child being injured also about the child who was acting out, if you will, and that and that we we just need to do better. That has long lasting effects and I appreciate that we need to put our focus there and look for those answers. I know this is, we've had a spike like this before and we figured out ways to to work together to make that safer place for all the students. The other person I want to talk to that was brought up was about the volunteers. And Andy, I know that you shared with me and maybe you shared or I read it in the Friday memo, what you did a great job of talking about all the plans to mitigate that backlog. So if we haven't talked gotten that out in a bigger way, I'm guessing you have. I just wanted to call attention to the fact that I know you you have a plan and it sounds it's it sounds feasible for the parts we have control over. So at some point, we should make sure everybody knows that. Also, just want to take a second and as we're talking about voting this this cycle on November eighth, you also have a chance to vote for parks. And with all that's going on and all that we have that we're voting on, also want you to ponder the fact about that our parks, our Lane County Parks, really do provide a quality of life for our community. In the park levy, you can go to the yes for Lane County Parks dot org. It's major twenty thirty-three, five, three, three, five. And you can see the list of where that funding will go. And what's near and dear to my heart, I know you'll think I'll say pickleball, but I'm not going to. I'm going to say access that because of deferred maintenance, we we have seen the parks deteriorate. We have seen not being able to meet the A D A requirements, still working on that, of course. But it's it's a chance for me and for you to vote, not only for those things that are important to you, for parks that go, you know, all the way to the coast, but to vote for inclusion of people with disabilities so they have access to the parks as well. So there's it's fun to be an elected official. You get to put a political plug into a meeting that you otherwise don't get to if if you're a staff person. So I'm going to take that opportunity and hopefully you guys, the folks listening will take a look at that and we'll be able to pass this parks measure and ensure that we have those open spaces for our children, our community and our future generations. Thanks for the time.
Thanks, Alicia. Laurel, do you want to go next?
Just a second. Thank you. I want to talk about discrimination and what it looks like and what we allow. We have several policies about discrimination in our school district. And while I have been on the board, we have followed none of them. I have dealt with object racism and discrimination pointed absolutely towards me since I started on this board. I've had my name called out in meetings. I've had my skin color called out in meetings. And I have asked since March of last year of this year to restrict people who do that from this board meeting. I would like everybody to reflect on what it means to be a black person and have to continually be subjected to that kind of behavior and to have the people in charge decide it's fine, it's his right. This is right to discriminate against me and other people that look like me. It is not equitable. What is the equity there? I wouldn't have to deal with this if I was white. But I hopefully still would because I would like to think that I would have that that what's inside of me has to where I want to help all those that are marginalized comes from the core belief of who I am, not just my skin color. There is no way I would have ignored somebody saying, point of order, please stop this and with the way they're talking about people. It happened last year. It's continuing to happen this year. There has been no change, though I've been asking since March to stop being discriminated against over and over and over. I do not agree with the people that came to talk about measure one fourteen. It was obviously they were sent because I am one black person who is saying it is a racist measure. I know in Portland, too many black people are dying from gun violence. I would like it to stop. I am a Quaker. I absolutely believe in pessimism. But I do not believe in it at the expense of black and Latina bodies. I do not, and I will not support this measure. The history of that goes into making gun restriction laws is that it has always been about keeping guns out of black and Latina hands. It's always been about that. Please read the history. It is out there. It's very easy to find. The measures that they say that guard against it being racist don't exist. I've looked at the measure. I've read it over and over. All that's been told to me is there's appeals process. How is an appeals process work when black individuals in our state are convicted of felonies at eight times the rate of whites, whites? That means for every one white person that gets gets to have their their weapon, eight black men will not. I say black men, not because it's only black men that want weapons, but that is the majority of what of who is talking about this and who is being restricted from getting weapons. I say because as a board, we talk about transformative justice and a restorative response. This is where it should start. It doesn't start with taking guns out of people's hands and saying, good, now be a good person. The reality, the only person that helps in this this measure was absolutely written in this way is police officers. It is a safety measure for police officers, which they have bamboozled people into believing it will it will absolutely save black lives. I can tell you, while there may be a few that get saved, there will be more black people put away in jail, Latina people put in way in jail because they had a weapon on their body when they were they're arrested for a drug offense. So it all of a sudden, it's a huge felony. There's a whole background on this. I've sent you the information. The reality is it doesn't, the majority of people like what it says and it sounds right to them. But the reality is that this is a racist measure that could have been written better. And I would absolutely support any gun measure that was written with equity in mind. But there was no equity here. I believe absolutely one hundred percent there was the wish and intent to save lives. And I love that intent. But I I can't agree to that at the expense of blacks and Latina. I can't. Thank you.
Thank you, Laurel. I'll wrap up the statements with mine. I want to thank Michelle and Gordon for giving some additional details about the event that was spoken to during the community comments. We live in a tremendous community with many choices for activities and I am grateful for opportunities beyond those offered by our district, some of which were mentioned by Dorothy. Opportunities to expand our engagement, not only with literacy, but also with culture. The mental health subcommittee met earlier today. We have begun the process of crafting a mental health task force to be comprised of district folks along with community partners. The work ahead of us is exciting and though we have made great strides in building our team of practitioners and programs, we still have gaps to fill. This team that will be forming in the near future will be integral in identifying, visioning, and then implementing solutions to fill these gaps, all while working towards creating a holistic and integrated mental health system. I look forward to continuing to share with you at every step of the way. I'm going to close with another spotlight of a community member in the four J family as part of what I'm referring to as the heart of four J. One area of the four J community that gets less attention is our charter schools. So today I want to spotlight the tremendous work done by Denise Velasco, currently in her eighteenth year teaching at Network Charter School. From quite a few people, I have heard Denise described as the glue that holds Network Charter School together. While this is the spotlight on Denise, this is this also gives our community a window into the beautiful school culture and unique programming at Network Charter School. Because Network Charter School is a community and Denise does work alongside and in collaboration with their colleagues and the students. In their eighteen years at N C S, Denise has centered compassion while teaching what feels like everything under the sun. Math, health, sexual education, P E, social justice, world geography, independent living, event planning, coding, anatomy and physiology, American history told through the national park system, social studies, and not to be forgotten zombies. What is consistent is that if there is a need identified or an interest expressed, Denise is always amongst the first to step up. From planning all school events to facilitating clubs and affinity groups to leading students on field trips, often hundreds of miles away, Denise is there at the center of the activity, all in. Outside of the classroom, Denise can be found serving as the guidance counselor. They take the lead on putting together a clothing boutique, as well as a holiday boutique where students can shop free of charge for gifts for their loved ones. During the pandemic, they were committed to delivering food boxes and met students at their homes to help with assignments in front yards. Every year they planned graduation and during the pandemic recruited folks to go to graduates' houses to celebrate their graduation. More recently, Denise co-created the Outdoor Credit Recovery Adventure Program along with Heather Hickox. This program is a kinesthetic and immersive learning experience for students who are deficient in credits. Almost every month, they provide students an opportunity to earn credit in core subjects, language arts, social studies, science, math, and P E, all done through hiking, camping, cultural and outdoor activities. Last year, they provided positive learning experiences, credit learning experiences for thirty-four different students who filled seventy-nine spots over only six trips. I do not know how one person does this all. This is also a common refrain when folks share about Denise. It's quite the task to even list all of this, let alone do it. And honestly, there's even more on the list of what Denise has done or continues to do. At this point, even Denise has lost track. However, what we do not want to lose sight of is recognizing the tremendous work Denise has put into serving the students attending Network Charter School. Thank you, Denise, but also thank you to the entirety of Network Charter School for being such an important part of the heart of four J. With that, we will move on to the next item in the agenda, which is our consent group items for action. There are two items on the consent agenda tonight. Seeing that Gordon has his hand raised.
I move that we adopt the consent agenda.
Great. Is there a second? Okay, I see that Gordon has moved to adopt the consent agenda and Michelle Shu has seconded. All those in favor, please raise your hand and say aye, or you can just raise your hand. Okay, I see one, two, three, four, five, six hands raised. All those opposed, raise your hand. I am not sure if that's, I guess, I guess I'll count that as abstaining. For now, the consent agenda passes with eyes from Gordon Leifer, Meyer Abassa, Michelle Shu, Alicia Hayes, Judy Newman, and Kirsty Hasija Kaufman and abstention from Laurel O'Rourke. Next on the agenda are items for information. Next on the agenda are items for information. The first item for information is a report on student enrollment as of October 1st of this year. And we will be hearing from Oscar Luedato. I pass the floor to you, Oscar.
Good evening. I have to talk about actually enrollment on October 1st. So October 1st enrollment is used by all the, as the benchmark, there's not sort of for size of each school or each district in the state. And for us, the big picture is that this year our enrollment was very stable. As you can see here in this table, our enrollment went down to 37 students only, so 0.2%. And actually that stability in enrollment happened on all three levels. As you can see there, very small change. When we look at enrollment over time, we see a trend of declining enrollment. It started in the mid 90s. And but a recovery, a smaller recovery, it started in 2014. And then a 600, about 600 drop in enrollment due to the pandemic. And then now this year, we had this stability in enrollment compared to last year. And when we look at that 600 student enrollment drop during the pandemic, we see that most of that drop happened in lower grades. As you can see in this table, or in this table by cohort, that drop concentrated on the younger cohorts of students. So it has the potential that drop to have lingering effects on our, on our enrollment that are long term. When we look at our enrollment in Eugene Online Academy, our online program, we see a 74% decrease in enrollment that was expected when the effects of the pandemic started being lower. And also when we look at our, the number of our students who are homeschooling, we saw a drop of about 300 students that basically reversed more than half of the large increase in homeschooling that we saw during the pandemic. And I would be glad to answer any, any questions.
Thank you, Oscar. I see that Gordon has his hand up. Gordon?
Thanks, and thank you, Oscar. I have two questions. One is, and I don't know if you know, if the extent to, the degree to which our enrollment is still below, let's say, 2019 is more or less consistent with the pattern in other districts in the state? And that's question one. And question two is if I saw it right when the slides went by, it looked like, well, we have overall decreased. We had a significant increase in ninth grade and a small increase in sixth grade. And I just wondered, does it mean basically there's the fall off in younger grades? But as people are making the decision about where's my kid going for middle school or for high school, they're coming back into the district? Or, or do those numbers mean anything?
Yeah, when you look at those enrollments by grade, you look every year, it could be deceiving. That's why I included also the enrollment by cohort, because if you follow a cohort, there's no jump. Those two cohorts of students happen to be larger than others. But we haven't seen big changes in transition rates of students from one grade to another. And that was unexpected. Because if everything had continued according to the trend before the pandemic, and since we're 300 students came back to the system from being homeschooler, from school, it's called in from homeschooling. And that decrease was surprising, and we are going to get more information when all the releases the enrollment for all districts that will tell us more where those students could have gone. But our experience when we saw all the surprises, surprising drops in enrollment, back then it was tied to rents in Eugene being higher than in surrounding districts or even longer distance districts. And we had seen that in the past year or two years, to the point that in June and July, the average rent in Eugene was higher than in Portland according to Zillow.com. And so that could be a factor, but we'll have more information when we get the enrollment in each district in the state from over here.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions for Oscar? Great. Thank you so much, Oscar. Next on our items for information is a review of Oregon's School Board Association membership. Andy, I pass it off to you.
Thank you. We have for some time been in the conversation as a board about our relationship with OSBA. We have spoken at work sessions and in goal setting sessions. And there are varying degrees of thought on how our relationship with OSBA should look moving forward. I've been asked just to clarify what we, what we get from our, the fees that we pay OSBA. And I'm happy to answer any questions, but we get policy updates from OSBA following legislative sessions, sample policies, policy advice, and policy rewriting services. They host on our website 4J Board Policy Changes and update our policies as we change them and as the legislation changes policy or our legislation, rather. Information and advice from them, either about board operations or district operations, or how things are going in other districts in the state, including legal advice. We have access to their publications and trainings. And then not all of our insurance, but our property casualty and theft insurance, the premium that we pay to pace is based on being a member of OSBA. I do not know what the delta would be. For example, if we went to get our own, I would need to receive quotes from other agencies. But I, but I know that the, the premium that we pay, the cost of our property theft insurance currently is set based on our being a member of OSBA. And I imagine that there would be some, some discussion at this point, and I'm happy to answer any questions that might be helpful in making a decision about how to move forward.
Does anybody have any questions for Superintendent Dai? Okay. Well, thank you, Superintendent Dai. That was helpful. We will now move on to the third item for information, which is
I would like to say my part on this.
Okay, great. Go ahead, Laurel.
Thank you. While some members of the board are relatively comfortable with OSBA services, to and advocacy on behalf of our districts, others have expressed varying degrees of dissatisfaction with our district being a member of that organization. I am among those who feel OSBA in its current state cannot sufficiently serve our district due to inadequate diversity of lived experience among its staff. I arrive at this conclusion based on my experiences with OSBA and by looking at what can only be described as a relatively narrow profile of staff who work for the organization. I believe my experiences with OSBA would have been significantly different had there been staff members, even a single member of staff, who had the lived experience of being a black person in this, in this state, or even in our county. I am obviously not the only black American amongst school districts across the state expecting to be represented represented with the governor's office, the legislature, or the State Department of Education. Without adequate representation, what face should I be expected to have in the willingness, much less ability for OSBA to advocate for those in my community? With my particular life experiences, OSBA has created a campaign entitled Equity 365, yet their team remains largely members of the white majority. It is intenable to indefinitely allocate our finite resources to an organization that wouldn't pass our own equity evaluation. I'm going to read that again. They would not pass our own equity evaluation for hiring. I have previously called upon members of the board to divest from OSBA. This call to action has been with hesitancy, to say the least, reflecting on what I believe is the best interest of this district and that the state as a whole. I am prepared to adjust my call to action in hopes that all members of this board can come together in solidarity to demand changes to be made with, within OSBA. I'm proposing that as a board of education for, at the, as the board of education for Eugene School District 4J, we remain members of OSBA, provided that OSBA takes seriously our expectation that they take concrete steps to ensure their staff reflects the racial diversity within our school board, our schools and our school districts across the state. Specifically, they have no black or indigenous people working for them, yet they write policy and make decisions about that. Only by doing so can OSBA have a, have the diversity of experiences and perspectives needed to adequately represent a district like ours. If in one year we are not satisfied with the progress made to diversify their workforce, I would ask that we revisit this issue and reconsider our being a member of the Oregon School Board Association. This issue is incredibly important to me because I feel it is incredibly important to our students and families. There is no sense in jeopardizing the work we as a board can do right here, here, right now, for the benefit of our students and families. Instead, I ask that my fellow board members support a request to work with staff to propose a resolution that clearly articulates our shared concerns as they relate to this primarily white organization. If you have questions about this, I can answer them. But first I will say, for those in the audience who did not know this, they have not, they did not answer any of my emails or act in good faith last year when I contacted them and they, we pay them to support board members. But because all my questions were about equity and about racial harassment, I was completely ignored. Not slightly nor completely ignored, while other board members and staff members were regularly having all their questions answered. Does anybody have any questions?
Gordon, do you have something?
I don't have a question. I would just say I would, I would support that general direction. I don't know specifically what we, what we should ask of OSBA, but I think it makes sense to, to come up with things that we could ask of them that would improve their, their equity. Thanks.
Thanks, Gordon. Judy?
Yeah, I just want to add that I had, I thought that was a really good suggestion, Laurel, and I really would look forward to seeing what questions we could come up with and express our concerns as a member. I, yeah, so I'd be, I would definitely be open to that conversation. Definitely.
Thanks, Judy. Superintendent Dai?
I would just say that if ultimately the board decides that you would like staff to support the development of a resolution, we would do so fully and readily.
Thank you, Superintendent Dai. Does anybody else have anything to add? Michelle?
Um, I think a lot of this happened before I, I had joined the board, so I'm, you know, I'm not clear on all the details. So, um, yeah, Laurel, if you could meet with me and I don't know if Kirti is available, but we could listen. And, um, I have been receiving messages from the Color Caucus and I, I can't say that I, I know specifically what they're doing, but they're, they're focusing on diversifying OSBA. And I, I would like to hear, you know, where you want to start from and how we can work toward equity, not only with OSBA, but you know, throughout Oregon. It's really important.
Thank you, Michelle. Judy?
Yeah, thank you, Michelle. I, I just had a question. I should have asked the superintendent. What do we pay for dues each year?
We pay this year just over $20,000. I think 20,500 and a few. I don't know how that compares to prior years, but I don't suspect that it oscillates greatly.
Thank you.
Alicia?
Thanks. You know, Michelle, you said you weren't on the board, so you don't really know what happened. Well, I would say as a board member, we're not really sure because Laurel had asked for time to talk about it. And, and I know I appreciate that. I've heard little bits and pieces. But I don't know if it is important for all of us to hear the same thing or already, already know that if you ignore someone's voicemail or email, it has a very different effect if you're a person of color or a person of difference than a white person, able-bodied, white, straight person. You take it. It, it just, we have to be better with our customer service. So I only know this little piece. And so if we do move forward, I, I would want to hear that so we could address where the issues are. I don't, I'm not asking for that today, Laurel. I'm not asking for, it's just, it's just we haven't had that opportunity. Well, we haven't had the opportunity to hear it, and Laurel hasn't had the opportunity to say it. And that's one of the reasons, you know, I moved that, that we have that on the agenda. So absolutely, it is our organization. We have a responsibility to make it a better organization. And so I'm, I'm, I'm for us figuring out the most effective way that we can to address the issues and then to look and say, how can we not just address the issues, but how can we help them be better? Which of course, as we address and look at how other people can be better, we can improve being better ourselves. Yeah, thanks.
Thanks, Alicia. Kirti?
Yeah, sorry, Alvin, off camera. It's not been a good, healthy. So I believe Laurel, like, if she's says how she's been treated, and I don't doubt with OSBA being a representative organization, the state of Oregon and the history of Oregon, that it has serious issues with representation and things on those. So I'm in full support if there's ways that we can base our membership on ways that we can affect change on the inside. I think my initial fear was just with a straight divestments that they would have no reason to listen to us otherwise. And I like the, I like the take that you've taken on it. So I appreciate that. This tactic, because I, I think that they'd just be like, fine, like, screw you at that point. Um, so I like the, I, I mean, I, I like the whole notion of like having a, a reason to affect some change on there that needs to happen, and then having some rationale for why we would want to put some contingencies on it. So yeah, I'm probably in favor of whatever that may look like. Um, but to echo Michelle's, I also have been receiving stuff from the Color Caucus and just been like looking at those. So again, I don't know how, what kind of say or what kind of
They have no power.
Yeah, that's, that's really the question I was getting to.
They have zero power. It's really a way to say, hey, brown people, could you go over to the side?
Yeah, and I haven't been to any of the conferences. I am attending the one on there. So like, I've had zero interaction with any of that. So that was really my question is like, really, what kind of like power or things that they actually have in towards of affecting that? But, um, yeah.
The leader of the Color Caucus called me and told me all black people are angry at me for my behavior on the school board last year. And he, I absolutely believe was put up to that by the OSBA leadership.
In any case, like, I, I mean, and what I, I guess just to summarize is that, yes, I like the take that you've come to on it. Um, I think they're more likely to listen to us in that regard too, and so happy to, whatever, support that decision.
Alicia, do you still have your hand raised, or is that?
Actually, I forgot to put it down, but now I have an idea. Can I get in the queue? So I'm guessing that we could send this to leadership to um, look at how we move on to the next step and what that would be. Is that what our suggestion is today?
My, my ask was for it to go to staff. And that's what Andy said, that they were willing to work on this.
Okay. I just want to make sure what, you know, I think there's stuff, there's there are things that we don't know, and I just want to make sure staff knows them so they can be addressed. That's all. I just want to make sure that information flows. So I am fine with staff working on it. I think that's a great idea. I just wanted to verify how that works.
I, I don't, I'm not as worried about them fixing their past behavior as I am interested in them changing how they behave statewide, because I can't be the only one who's dealt with this. I'm just probably the loudest one who's dealt with this. Um, so the reality is is I've heard in other professional organizations, this has worked, and I am hopeful that in this day and age where people are noticing when you do not have diversity in your entire organization, it's pretty crazy. You can see their pictures on their page that it would be better to change it.
Kiroki, thanks. And I don't know, Maya, if we're looking at a motion or it's just without objection, what, what we want to do. Just, just a thought. Thanks.
I think right now it's a item for information. If somebody wants to make a motion, that is always an option. I think that the suggestion that Laurel is making is that staff craft a resolution, if I'm understanding, that we then consider at a future meeting?
So if no one else, if other people want to make that motion, great. I would be more than happy to make that motion. But I see hands up, so I'm going to stop.
I just, I just want to say one thing that, um, whoever was the person who was answering on behalf of OSBA was just one person, and they, they are a political organization, and I, I doubt they would say something worded so strongly toward you that, that is wholly offensive. That's really offensive what was said to you. And I I know from, you know, I, I attended the, the last conference out of curiosity, and I did go to the Color Caucus event, and the one thing that stood out to me is that they are willing to invest in diversifying and in, in that group of people, and they change, you know, they're, they're always, they're always changing. Um, so I'm hoping that when you people come in, they will do better. I think what you're requesting is that we request the same, that we ask for them to consider that they did not, or that particular person did not speak equitably, or, you know, that was, like I said, it was wholly unacceptable what was said to you. And, um, I don't know how to hold one person accountable who is representing a large organization. I don't know, but, um, yeah, we can ask them to do better.
So I've put myself in the queue, um, only to just comment that I think that this is um, coming at really perfect timing for us to uh, work collaboratively with other boards from across the state. I, I know that in recent reconfigurations of OSBA, their board is now um, a third either black, indigenous, Asian, Latinx, and half of the officers of that board is as well. And I think that we can, um, that, that, that most, that movement will help us with what you describe as, uh, what, what I hear in your, in your statement, Laurel, for calling for that to be represented in the staffing as well. Um, I think that we're experiencing something similar in 4J, and I'm seeing that happening across the state with more and more um, diversity in board members. So I, I think that the timing for um, us to join that, that collective movement of making some profound expectations really clearly articulated is, is important. And I think Kirti is right that, that if we aren't members, then our voice is going to just disappear into the void. So I'm eager to see what we craft as a district to add to that movement that's happening. Um, and, and see how we can collaborate or complement or standalone, whatever we end up doing. But I think that this is, um, that the timing is right. So I appreciate this, uh, approach to to demanding that things change, that we do this in a way that is collaborative statewide instead of looking at just ourselves individually and in isolation and seeing that, that this is something that all of Oregon deserves from OSBA. So I appreciate this, and I'm eager to see what we craft. Laurel?
Yeah, as, as I've said in the past, uh, you know, our complaint system is has been used to racially harass me. The primary person that was behind that was Christine. She did this with help the entire year with OSBA. Also, other staff, Sydney and other people had access to OSBA to support them. I reached out starting immediately after, I think we were, there was a FOIA request or something, or we were, I was being accused of attacking staff. I not, did not get any help. I was told to talk to Christine. I'm, I mean, it wasn't one person. That was one egregious, disgusting person who doesn't even get paid, as far as I understand, by the organization. It was constantly, over and over the entire year. They're supposed to provide legal support for board members. I reached out, I used their form. They said somebody would contact me, they even, and then nothing ever happened. I called again, I asked again, nothing ever happened. They were horrible to me all year long. It was all connected to what my complaint was about in that they do not understand discrimination and racism because they have nobody on their staff who does this work. I did reach out to a board member, and I was ignored as well. I got no help. And that's what we pay them for. So that, that, I don't want to go on and about, on about it. I really would like to say we should not be part of an organization that we wouldn't hire to do work because they don't have the diversity. And I think that's what I would like to put before them, and then within what, if they can't change within a year, we do not work with that organization.
Alicia and Judy, and then if we are done, we'll move on to the next slide.
So I'm going to break my pattern and say, and make a motion for action on this that we ask staff to, are you guys okay with me doing it, or Laura, did you want to do it? Okay. That we ask staff to look at a resolution, use that term loosely, however you want to do that, uh, to go to OSBA. And leave it pretty open unless somebody wants to tighten it up, to go to OSBA to look at addressing our concerns around their, their staffing makeup and their knowledge and understanding of equity as it relates to school boards in our, and somebody can help me with this, because you know, I'm not a wordsmith or
Alicia, can I? Can I help you with this and make the suggestion that this is proposed?
Rather have me just stumble over for the next half hour, or?
I'm just simply suggesting that you propose it as a without objection decision. I think that it's pretty clear.
So then I'm going to start again. So without objection that we move this, we ask staff to look at a resolution to address the concerns we have discussed this evening. How's that?
Thank you. Do we have any objections to that? I don't see any indication that there's objections. So Superintendent Dai, if you can note that we all would like this to be something prioritized by staff. Judy, do you have something else to add, or are we okay to move on?
I would just like to make a quick comment for the state, and going forward, I, I think that whatever resolution we come up with should really be clear about um, part of it really. So I'm, I'm reflecting on last year and, and some of the issues that were very, very hard. And I think there are definitely policies and procedures that we, as a legal body, are advised to follow. And, and I just, if we're going to work on this, I'd like us to really do the work that will allow to not, you know, to look at the policies, to look at the complaints, to actually do the work so that we're not being mad at individuals, because really it's individuals implementing policies and procedures that probably need to be looked at. So I guess I just want to put that out there, that that's part of the work that I think we want to ask OSBA to partner with us to do.
Great. Thank you, Judy. With that, with, okay, thank you, Superintendent Dai. With that, we will move on to the third item for information, which is to receive a report on Division 22 Standards for Public Elementary and Secondary Schools, which we all received a very thorough report on in our agenda packet. Um, I believe I'm turning this over to you, Rob.
Yes, thank you. Um, hopefully you can see my screen now on, uh, on the, the slides for the Division 22. Is that, is that accurate? So, um, I'm not going to spend a, a lot of time going over all of these slides. I know there's a lot of them. But I just do want to just state for the, the board members that are uh, here for the first time with Division 22, the way this is an annual thing that the district does every year, this is an item for information. And we report on the standards for the previous year. So I know this is 2022, but we're reporting on last year. And so these standards are standards that are established by the state of Oregon and their compliance standards. You see this, uh, image of the floor here that represents that these are baseline requirements. Um, they don't represent best practice necessarily. They just represent what the state is asking every school district to do, and every school district is required to submit where they're at on these standards and turn them into ODE and also to post them on the website. So these things are done, uh, every year. And again, I just want to articulate that they, uh, they don't represent best practice. When the district says that we're in compliance with something, that means that staff has analyzed what we're currently doing in that area and has determined that, that we meet that, that floor requirement. And if any board member has any particular area that you want to ask about, I'll do my best to, to, uh, answer any questions about that area. And, but I'm not going to be able to answer something if I'm not, if I don't have details on it. And so we'd have to come back with, uh, with details if there's any particular area that you'd like looked into at greater detail. There are over fifty rules that are established in Division 22, and so sometimes you'll hear people say that unfunded mandates, and this is the collection of those. So, so basically when legislature passes something, they, they put it in Division 22 and require us to report on it. So these are the different areas and the document, both the, the slides and the document in the board packet, um, describe those. So again, I, I'm not going to, to read the slides, but just give you an overview and answer any questions that you have. Couple of big topics for this year in particular is the waiving of the essential assess, assessment of essential skills, which I think is a a, a big move. They are removing the graduation requirement of assessing a student level of performance to graduate. So the graduate standard is, is, um, is credits earned. And there, and there, for many years, there was also an assessment associated with that in reading, writing, and math, and that is no longer in effect. And also the waived for, for last year was the, uh, the kindergarten assessment. So those are the things that have changed. These are the key dates here for Division 22 that will be submitting this report and, uh, turning this in by the end of the month. So that's where I wanted to just open it up to questions that you have. The rest of the slides are just areas that the district feels that we're in base level of compliance, and then also areas that we determine that we're not in compliance yet, and then addressed what we would need to do to get into compliance with that.
Judy?
My question has to do with the consequence, you know, I, I was looking at the ones that we weren't in compliance about, and I see the plans going forward. Most things are in shape, but a really classic example is the physical education requirement, which I think I've seen on there forever because we physically can't meet that. So what is the consequence of not meeting a standard over multiple years, et cetera?
It, um, basically every year you turn in a report on your progress toward it. And as, as far as consequences go, there, there isn't, you know, you don't go into program improvement status, or you don't have someone from ODE coming to, to, um, you know, turn in an extensive plan. So, so I would say that, that ODE's goal with this is that you, you continue to improve. And, but there isn't a, um, a level attached to these standards that you're in danger of losing funding or anything along those lines.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks Judy and Rob. Are there any other questions or comments? My understanding is this is just a piece of information that you are required to share with us. So I appreciate that.
Yeah. And again, I'm happy to answer any particular individual questions you might have about a particular area of the district. And happy to do that.
Michelle.
Yeah, I, I'd like to schedule a time with you, Rob, to. Ask some questions around media programs.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I can do that. Yeah, it's, that's a, that's an interesting. Interesting standard in that the, the, the bars is extremely, extremely low on that one. And you know, one person to represent. To oversee quote unquote, the programs of the district, but you know, in particular in 4J over the years. We have things called program staffing and things that are left up to buildings to determine. And whenever something's left up to a building to determine it, it ends up not being equitable in the, in the long run and in, in, in. In many instances. So the library is a perfect example, and we have some schools that have. The building is set aside EA classified support in libraries to maintain the collection and to work with the kids and. And help them learn about those skills. And in other buildings, there, there isn't anyone there. And so it's, it's, that's, that's again, an area of. Of not, not having something that's programmed staffed. And that is something that we could adjust in, in, in the budget, budgeting process. If that was a, a board priority directive.
Well, it, it's my priority, but um. Also. I think it's also, it's open to interpretation as well to.
Yes, yeah, a lot of these areas are open to interpretation. I mean, there's the, there's, there's the, what the law is asking. And then there's how we're interpreting that. So you know, I think of, you know, evaluation, evaluation of staff is another area that. You know, we have the systems in place, but how well they're used again is, is kind of. Way areas of improvement. So. I'll, I'll schedule a time with you to kind of go over in detail and answer any of those questions you would have.
Okay, just, ju- just to read, like having one employee to cover a district our size. It, it, it's silly.
Yeah, it's, it, it, like I said, it's, I mean, there's, there's some districts that. That they don't even have one employee. They have someone from the ESD that comes and checks. Couple of times a year. So it's. And that's the, the licensed person that's attached to that district. So there's, there's a lot of, like I said, it's not best practiced. What is reflected in these compliance.
We, we also can't compare to. A really small.
So yeah, no, Michelle, I'll happy to, to chat with you in detail about. That and any other area that you have questions about.
Thanks, Rob.
Thank you. Rob, while I have you here, you are up next. So don't go anywhere. Next on the. Items for action and we have as an item for action approved the budget committee's selection process. I'll let you jump into that.
Yeah, that, um, that proposal is in your packet. And it's a, it's a one pager there. Near the, near the back. And so this is a. Has everyone found that?
I would draw everyone's attention to the, particularly to the end where there's two proposals. That we are being encouraged to select between if I'm correct, Rob, is that right?
Yeah, that would be the, 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 the most expedient way to, to look at this is last week, we discussed this. And so I wrote up what was discussed and came up with the two options to select. What we, what we talked about last week was having one person from the Equity Committee being appointed. And then you'd need to vote, you'd need, that person would need four votes in a, in a meeting in a, in a regularly scheduled meeting. And then for the, the, the final position. There's a couple of choices there. One choice involving everyone doing some ranking and another choice we bought involving a, a smaller group. So I'll leave, leave this up to you to. To discuss those two options and, and either select one or again, this is a. I think we've, we've gone into items for action, right? So yeah, it's, this is something that you can make a motion and vote on. And I'm happy to answer any questions about what's written down here.
Alicia, I see you're having your hand raised.
I would like to make a motion if that's okay, so we can have discussion. So I would move, I would move that we accept the proposal that says. One person from the Equity Committee that recall, then would require four votes from our board to move forward and beyond. The Budget Committee and that we as a full board review. The applications and invite people to come and be. Interviewed. Questions, are you, did I catch that right?
I, I think that you made a motion. So now the question is, do we have a second? I see that we have a second. Alicia has moved that we accept the proposal. Of one member from the Equity Committee being approved by the board. But then for the second Budget Committee member that we would collectively. Consider each application and move them forward. I'm not sure the details after. Okay.
And just to be clear, the Equity Committee moved somebody forward. We didn't vote on that. We don't vote on it from the Equity Committee.
You don't. I think we have to formally. Appoint the recommendation of the Equity Committee.
That is correct. That's my intent. I think I wasn't clear.
No worries. And it has been seconded by Judy. Is there any discussion?
I think, let me just, let me see if I understand this correctly, Rob. I read this that. You made the proposal and maybe we want to accept the whole thing. And then there's a, still a choice at the end. We need to choose one of those two options at the end to complete the proposal.
Yes, right? Yeah. But we need to amend or, uh, yeah, amend Alicia's to add that last step to be included.
It's good with me.
Judy, do you have a preference for option one or option two?
Yeah, I actually want, I'm going to go for the option two that we rank the, the people that we interview. And that's because I think I was thinking through the first option. And it would just depend on who gets in. I mean, there are probably a lot of people who applied that would do well. So whoever gets their hand up first and nominate someone. So I, I just think the fairer process would be the second.
Do we have a?
Yeah, that's fine. If that's a friendly amendment and clarity, yes, thank you, Judy.
And we add that to the original amendment, the original motion. So the original motion now stands that we accept the proposal of. Uh, appointing the recommended member from the Equity Committee and then for the second person, we will all. Consider each applicant, applicant and based on a ranking system. Narrow them down to four and then collectively after we interview those four, rank the four interviewees. With a one to four ranking and share their ranking without discussion. The candidate with the highest ranking would be nominated for selection and. That has now been, that is what we are now discussing before we vote.
Should let Gordon make the motion.
We should have made the motion.
He can read it.
Do we have any discussion? All right, without risking reading that all through again, I am going to ask that all those in favor of the motion. Raise their hand to say I. I see we have one, two, three, four, five, six folks raised. Kirti has indicated that she had to step away. So we have a unanimous quorum vote here with Judy Newman. Maya Rabasa, Laurel LaRocque, Gordon Laver, Alicia Hayes and Michelle Shu indicating support for the motion. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
All right, excellent. Well, we'll, we'll get this application out November 1st and tell your friends to. And people that are interested to, to apply. We'll get that on the website.
Great. Thank you, Rob. The next item for action is to consider for board approval, board statement supporting measure 114. Judy, I hand this off to you.
So I'm going to take a little bit different tack tonight. I think we've had a lot of conversation. And we've talked about this measure and think it's clear that we have. Varying viewpoints, a range of positions on measure 114 from our board members. So I just wanted to suggest taking this in a little bit different, different direction. And I was going to suggest I change the wording of the last paragraph of the statement. I hope everyone has it in front of you. And I'm just going to read it because, and the wording would say. At the end, instead of the Eugene 4J School Board strongly endorses, I would say the following members. Of the Eugene 4J School Board strongly endorse measure 114. And the statement goes on. And then I would say, I would ask that the board members who would like to sign this statement. Can let me know by tomorrow at five o'clock, email call, and then we'll add those names to the bottom of this statement with that change. And we will then post it to Board Book. So the public can see it. So that's my proposal. Because I do want to honor the different feelings and this has been on the agenda and I think. It might be a path, it would be a pathway forward. So without objection, is that, I guess I would make that motion.
Are you making a motion or are you suggesting without objection that, that individuals who want to add their name, add their name?
Yes, that's what I'm suggesting without objection.
Okay.
And people let me know by five o'clock tomorrow.
Okay.
So.
Your hand raised?
Yeah, so what? I, I, yeah, I don't, this isn't a board, it, everything else says it's coming from the 4J School Board. So if it's individuals, it needs to come from individuals. And it could be individuals that signed off on it. Or just vote since you're probably going to agree to it and just do it the way you wanted to do it. But I don't, I, my, my thing I was going to ask to do is that people do this as individuals who are on the 4J School Board. Which is still a lot of weight. So.
Well, I, I think that Laurel, what you're suggesting for me sounds like what Judy is suggesting. Judy. Can we ask that, well, I guess maybe I'm confused then and I would love clarification, but I'm wondering Judy. If what you are suggesting includes. Making the language clear that it is the undersigned and not the 4J School Board.
That was my suggestion, absolutely.
So Laurel, Judy is suggesting that it be something that is signed by individuals. How, how, how is that different from what you're suggesting?
4J letterhead, does it still say all the Eugene 4J School Board of Directors supports the, all this other stuff? It's saying it's, it's, this is a, as this is written all throughout it, it's coming from the, the school board. So if you want to keep it as it is. And not just the last line. Then. You need to.
She.
Vote, just vote. Vote.
I think that Judy just indicated that the language would shift to indicate the undersigned versus the board.
That doesn't change.
What Laurel is saying is that right now everything's ongoing, like it looks like it's still coming from the 4J and the only thing that's changed is the last line on there. So like right now, it still looks like an official documentation from 4J. So either we change the language to like literally be like. The, from the very beginning that this is from. The following members of the Eugene 4J say this thing as opposed to just have the entire document. Done on 4J letterhead, blah, 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 with the undersigned, or we just put it together as a Eugene 4G document and take a vote on it. But at the moment, just changing the last line still doesn't. Negate that the presentation of the document is still coming out looking like it, it's, it's an actual 4G. I think, did I say that properly?
Yes, every paragraph mentions the Eugene 4G School Board.
Right. So I, I get like, so I, Judy, I get what you're trying to do too or whatever. And I'm. I think that. Like I'd be okay with either direction if it goes for a vote, but I like, or if it comes to the individual things on there. But if it's coming to the individual things, I think it would be have to take, we would just probably have to go through and just change the like from the very beginning. On there. Um, I think, I don't know if like the address and stuff and whatever on there, but it would have to just like, like dear so and so, the following members. As opposed to like.
That's, I think that's what Judy just said.
As opposed to signed off on like literally the first line needs to be like.
Right. Every, every line that indicates the board would change to. Yeah, that's what I understood.
Judy, is that cool? Like if we'd like change like anywhere it mentions the.
Yeah, I could do that.
Laurel, is that cool? Or anywhere it mentions 4G would be the undersigned as opposed to. Just the last line.
I mean, it would have to, then it's just, it doesn't need to come to the board. Then it just goes to the individuals.
So you're, I mean, like at that point, should we like just take the vote on it? Like just to.
There's no, it's not the same thing. It's not, you're not making a resolution or whatever they're calling it.
Right, so either like it's a board resolution. Support from 4G or we do it as separate individual members. And if that's the case, then we take a vote on it, then. They're like, right now there isn't a compromise that I think is going to like meet Laurel's requirements for the compromise on it.
So can we, can we do this in a little bit more organized way? And I appreciate all of the input and the passion, but I think that if we, somebody creates a motion, if we don't want to do the without objection approach. Then if somebody makes a motion, then we go into a discussion mode. So that we're, we don't find ourselves possibly speaking over each other because I, I want to make sure I hear everyone's voice individually. So. I heard Judy ask if without objection, we could do this as a voluntary add your name by tomorrow. With the edits of. It being from the undersigned versus from the board.
The last line. Judy had mentioned the last.
Yeah.
I did. I could definitely edit the rest. The only reason I didn't edit the whole thing was that these are quotes from a resolution that we already have. And that's why I say this, this was, was a resolution passed by the board, but I can make that clear. That the undersigned support these actions. From a previous resolution and then ended the same way. So that, that I could do from the beginning. I, because I see your point.
Thank you Laurel for raising your hand. And I don't mean to act like a bossy teacher, but I appreciate that. So we can follow each other's words. Go ahead, Laurel.
Well, my, so I would like it very clear to understand, it will not be on 4G letterhead. It will be coming from individual board members. And they will be, uh, and they'll remove. Everywhere that it makes sense. The, the, the reference to the entire. Board. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So I mean, that doesn't need to come before the, then you're, I think this is removing the resolution for. Should I make a motion to remove this as a, a resolution from the board?
It, it wasn't a resolution. It was approval of a board statement, which I think that Judy. Readjusted to be a without objection signing of a statement. So it does need to come before the board because we can't discuss this outside of a public meeting. If it goes beyond three members of the board. So we do need to do this in a public meeting setting. So if, oh, Gordon, go ahead. You're muted Gordon.
I'm, uh, I'm fine with this. I also feel like if we say without, without objection, it's not, you know, as, as Laurel is saying, it's kind of the way Judy has redone it, it's no longer something for the, that the board as a board is making decision about, we decided that just individuals were going to do it. But even though we're just doing it as individuals, I just wanted to say um, for myself, I'm, I'm really unsure about this. And I really appreciate the points that, that Laurel's raised in the discussion. It's led us to, uh, I come down on the side of that I'm going to support this. And I'm not sure, but you know, we have to make a decision one way or the other without being sure. And in that, so I just wanted to say that's where I'm at. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you Gordon. Um, I suppose if people want to let Judy know now they can, if not Judy has indicated that give her until 5:00 PM tomorrow and then you can let her know directly if you'd like to add your name. Um, and this document will clearly be made public so that, that, um, is aligned with our public meetings. Are there any other comments on this or can we move along?
I, I just wanted to say I appreciate the compromise. I, I see that is something we've been talking about as board goals. So I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay. I will wait to hear from people. Thank you.
Thanks everyone. All right. So then our last, uh, item for action is the one added at the beginning of the meeting to reassign board committees. Laurel, I'll hand this off to you, or I guess I see Gordon's hand is raised. Go ahead Gordon.
I, this is a little selfish because I'm on the East Coast and you're not, but I just, this feels like a serious conversation. We've been going since 5:30. I just wanted to ask if it might be possible to table this and hold it over to the next meeting rather than trying to do it now.
Is that a motion to table Gordon?
That's a motion to table. If somebody wants to second.
Back into, oh, I see Alicia has her hand raised also. So Gordon has moved to table this and Alicia has seconded. So we move into discussion and I see Laurel's hand is raised.
I, I don't understand a tabling a discussion at nine sixteen. Um, this is something I asked to be added to the agenda. So I, I feel like this may, this is a maneuver that is being done. And it's, uh, in reality, it's something that needs to be talked about. So, um, I would appreciate in good faith that we have a conversation about it. And I don't think it needs to take forever. In fact, I did, I doubt it will.
Okay. Um, I think that Gordon indicated that he was on East Coast time. So I think that's why he said this. So it's not nine fifteen for Gordon. But, um, I appreciate your point Laurel. And I see that Michelle and Alicia and Gordon have their hands raised. So Michelle.
Um, we can't predict how long this discussion will be. So, um, if there are two members who feel strongly about tabling and leaving this for another time, I, I would be open to that.
Alicia.
I just wanted to be clear. I wrote, I don't know what this is about. And it's just because I've been on the East Coast recently in a meeting. I wanted to honor how hard it is to be, um, awake. If this is time sensitive, I am fine moving forward. I'll stop. Yeah.
Thanks Alicia. Um, Gordon and then.
Sorry, that was a mistake. I didn't mean to have my hand up.
Here, I think.
I'm going on unmute. Y'all can hear the rockets behind me. It is, um, I'm happy to table this discussion like a hundred percent. It is, but I'm in my house and I have a 5:00 AM tomorrow morning, um, on the other side of the globe. So, um, like I would be very happy to have a much larger conversation at some other time, if that is amenable to everybody.
Does anyone else have any discussion on the topic before we vote on whether to table it? Laurel?
Yeah. So, um, this is about changing the makeup of the mental health committee. And my request, which I've already made to Maya is that she step aside since she's on a lot of committees and is board chair. And, and that we have a really lopsided committee, um, makeup right now. In which most of them are Michelle and Maya and myself and some of them. So I wanted to have this conversation. I don't feel like there's the behavior that I, and harassment I felt from Maya in board meetings and in our goal meetings that makes it for working, oh, a good working relationship. And I really want this to go forward. This is something I brought up last year and I'm very passionate about. And, um, Judy Newman has expressed interest of being on the committee. And I think it's fair that we that somebody change on the committee. So that's my, that's what I was asking. And so the, I know this was an attempt to stop me from talking about it right away and kind of let it go into several weeks from now. But the reality is that's not fair. I asked to bring this, add this to the agenda. We went, we had a pretty tight meeting and I think it's fair to have a conversation about it. And I don't think maneuvering like this is kind. It is not lead to a good working relationship when you're maneuvering people like this.
So Laurel, the motion that is on the table right now, or that is being discussed right now is whether to table it or not. So is your point that there is a timeliness to this or, um, I don't, I don't mean to speak on your behalf, but.
Yeah, I'm, I'm used to it. I, I said there's a timeliness and I think that the committee need, has work to do. We need to get started on it. And I would appreciate it if it, the makeup of it isn't cha-changed. And I would like to be able to have a vote on that. I don't, if you guys don't agree to it, then it doesn't happen. But also other things will happen.
So Gordon and then Michelle.
Thanks. I guess, I mean, all the more, it seems to me like this is a lot, like this is not a 10 minute conversation. I would just say for myself, I, I'm grateful for the time that Maya has spent on, if I could make Maya be on every committee, I would do that. And, you know, I've, I said last time that I think we need to have, that the way for us to get more done is to have, is to divide up and have people on subcommittees and like that. That's how we did the student voice thing was because a couple of people stepped forward into that work. And if we waited for all seven of us, I would certainly have no opposition to Judy or anybody else also doing the work. I don't, and, and all any of these committees do is bring things to us. All of this is to say, just to say where I'm at right now.
Not that this.
Laurel, 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 I'm in the, now it's my turn to talk. Thank you. Um, I'm just saying that to me, it's where I start off is not supporting it. But I'm open to hearing things, but it's not a short conversation. If everybody else wants to have it, we'll have it. But for me, I would rather put it off until we can have the longer conversation because I don't think it's a simple thing. Thanks.
Michelle.
Um, what? I requested to be on committees that, on topics that I was interested in. And I don't see how anyone is attempting to maneuver. I didn't realize your opinion Laurel before this all came about. Um.
And Gordon's maneuvering was stopping the conversation, not the, that part. Sorry. I am sorry if that was confusing. That was not what I meant.
Okay, um. I, I don't think anyone is trying to stop the conversation. It's just, I think it's going to, it may end up being an extended conversation. Um. And if you're asking for more people to join committees, if other people are willing to join and have the time and energy and, um, heart for it. I would not object to that in any way. Um, we're only seven people. And our, our time and our efforts are spread thin. We have lives outside of the school board and that's all I have to say.
So if, if we are continuing the conversation beyond the realm of the motion to table, could somebody please make an amended motion so that we are on point? Laurel?
I would like to amend the motion to ask that there be no more mental health committee meetings until after the, this is discussed and voted on at the November second board meeting. That makes me sad, but, um, there was a meeting today that I didn't attend because I didn't feel comfortable attending. And so I, I ask that that not happen, any, any further work on the mental health committee work until after that, unless staff is working on stuff, of course. And till after that board meeting, since it has been being pushed back for two weeks.
Is there a second to that amended motion?
That's second.
Okay Judy seconds that no more mental health committee meetings happen prior to the November second meeting. Is there discussion? I see you have your hand raised still Laurel. Do you want to speak again or Michelle?
Um, I, I don't, I did, I wasn't aware that you were uncomfortable about joining the meeting today. And unfortunately, we, um, we, um, scheduled another meeting for this, uh, November first. And it would have been nice to be informed of that.
December first.
Oh, December first. Sorry. So do we have? Thanks Maya. Um, okay, we don't have any meetings scheduled before November second. So it's not a conflict.
I, I also want to share that we were informed that you had resigned from the committee. So there was confusion there as to.
You are saying something, it is untrue to go, to turn things in a certain way, which I'm used to you doing. I have never said I have resigned. So please stop.
And that was misinformation. So, um, if there's not further discussion uh, about a committee meeting happening prior to November second.
Um, you, you know, it would, it would be really helpful if we could talk about this outside of this, outside of this meeting about the mental health committee. Cause I'm just, I'm really confused. I, I I don't understand what's going on.
I sent an email to Maya. She's fully aware. I, I chose not to share it with everybody because I don't think that was fair to Maya. I asked her to step aside. And I told her exactly why. I, if you'd like me to send it to you, you, I guess I can. But that I didn't, I didn't feel it was relevant.
I, I don't need you to send it to me because I don't agree that she should step aside.
Okay. So you just nullified your own point then.
So we are now moving into a territory.
How did I, how did I nullify my own point? I'm voicing my own opinion.
Point of order.
You're, Michelle, you're responding to a point that Laurel made that has nothing to do with the, with the motion on the table. So
I'm sorry.
It, it's no problem. We, we need to stay on topic and the topic is moving to have no more meetings prior to the November second meeting. Um, I, I had, if anybody has further discussion about that, let's do that. If not, I would like to call the vote because the next meeting is scheduled for December first. So honestly, the motion is frankly moot. So Gordon and Alicia, I see your hands raised. Okay. I see you shaking your heads. Then I would like to call the motion. Who, uh, votes to, sorry. Who votes in favor of not having any mental health committee meetings scheduled prior to the November second board meeting? I see a unanimous, uh, vote in favor of not having any mental health meeting scheduled prior to the November second meeting. Uh, by virtue of Maya Rabasa, Gordon Lefer, Judy Newman, Alicia Hayes, Michelle Shu, and Laurel Rook, or work voting in favor. Um, now we return to the question of tabling, the discussion of reassigning committees. Um, is there further conversation here or do we call the vote here as well? Gordon Lefer.
I was just going to call for a vote. I'd like to call the question on this.
Okay. So in that case, the.
I modified it. You asked if somebody would modify it. I modified it.
With, with the modification, with the modification we just approved, I would like to, to call for a vote on tabling this until the next meeting.
So who, uh, if you are in favor of voting of the motion to table this until the next meeting, please raise your hand and say aye. If you are not in favor, please raise your hand and indicate similarly. Laurel, are you abstaining or what, which way are you voting? Cause I'm not sure that we are, um, permitted to abstain if there's not a conflict of interest.
Um, there is no legal abstention, um, in our policy. Also, I did not, I mod, you said, and I quote, if anybody would modify this since please do so. And I said, I am modifying it by changing it to this.
Right. And we just voted on that amended motion. Um, and.
But that's not a modification then. So I guess I'm confused of I thought that was changing the tabling to something else, but okay.
It was an amended motion. Um, and it just passed. There will be no mental health committee meetings prior to the next meeting. The question still remains, do we discuss the reassignment of committees, which was the original addition to our agenda? Or do we table it per the motion made by Gordon Lefer and seconded by?
Gosh, I'll, I'll, I'll vote against. I get it now. Thanks.
Sure. Okay. Alicia, I see your hand raised and Gordon, um.
Okay. So we've completed the vote. I just don't want to mess that up.
Yes, we have. We have, well, Laurel didn't vote, so I don't know how to count her officially, but we have five.
She voted against.
Yeah.
Five members who have voted in favor and one member who voted against. So the motion passes with Alicia Hayes, Gordon Lefer, Michelle Shu, Maya Rabasa, Judy Newman voting in favor of tabling the discussion of reassign, reassigning committees. And Laurel, or Laurel or work voting against that. So I will then move on to.
Can I ask questions as we prepare for next meeting? About this? Is that okay Maya? So what I, and I know we have it somewhere, but if it could get sent out again, uh, who's on what committees, what committees we have. And then I know it's the chair's prerogative to put people on committees. Um, I'm guessing we can override the chair. I don't know. I've not seen that done. So I, I'm wondering how that happens. So if we can just get somebody to explain that to us at the beginning of the meeting. Um, I would, I would appreciate that, what that means. And can that really happen?
We can. And you see that Andy has his hand raised, hand raised.
Yeah, I will just make certain to, that we send out to the board, all relevant policies that talk about, um, standing in special committee appointments. So that it's easier.
What you're referring to is also part of our working agreement. So we can also attach that. That's my understanding that it's, um, leadership that, that makes that assignment. That's my understanding that it's leadership that, that makes that assignment. And it, it was last year, maybe the year before that the board decided to ratify that in a vote. Which we had at the beginning of this year already. Laurel, you still have your hand raised. Do you have something else? Is that, no, okay. So the next item on our agenda is an item for action at a future meeting. There he is. Rob?
Yeah, this is our, looks like our last item for, for this evening. And if, if I could refer you again to the, this is about selecting an equity trainer. We've been collecting quotes from people that are, that we'd like, that the board would like yours to select an equity trainer for us to engage with. And we've come, this proposal has on it a kind of a scoring rubric, a pretty basic one. But we wanted to present this, these ideas to be able to, to select one of the organizations that, or individuals to work with. And so if you could take a look at that. And also there's three different options for being able to select a trainer. One option involves having two board members and two members of the equity committee work with me to narrow the submitted proposals to three, and then invite those three trainers to be interviewed with the full board and then do a ranking. Option B is all board members independently rank the proposal. So that's everyone sees all of them and ranks them. And then we bring in three to interview. And then option C, well, we keep it out of the board meeting space and, and just appoint two board members to equity commit, committee members I'll work with. And we'll bring the final selection to the board to, to vote on. So those are three options. You can obviously create a, an al, an alternate option if you'd like. But this is a proposal for you. Open for any questions you have regarding this.
Thanks Rob. Does anybody have any questions or comments? This is an item for future action. Laurel?
Um, I was, I've been interested to see a difference between experience and lived experience, both with points for them, of course, but not to have it lumped together.
Okay, so kind of like a subcategory?
Yeah, or just another, you know, it could be work experience and then lived experience could be category or another, a number two or whatever or four.
Are there any other suggestions or comments or questions?
And this might be.
Go ahead Judy.
My protocol there. I assume that we're going to also get references from programs they've worked with. Okay, that was. Okay, that we would to just add that.
Yeah, yeah, I'll, 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 I'll make a note of that as well. And I would, I'd put that under the work experience category.
Are there any other comments or questions while we have Rob here? Okay, in that case, thank you, Rob.
So, so as far as.
Laurel raised her hand. Laurel?
I, I know policy work was supposed to be on this, but I don't see it written in part of the rubric.
Yeah, that's a good point. We, we have, we, we put policy in the scope of work, but we can add that under, under experience is policy work.
But yeah, because that's really specific type of work.
Yep. So what I can do, this, I'll just take these edits and then bring them back to you in November 2nd for you to, to vote. So be thinking about the three options there and whether or not how you might want to do that. So we'll just, and it says on here, October 24th, collecting, collecting applicant quotes. We might extend that to the, the end of the month, just so that there's, everyone gets a chance. So I just heard from another outfit today.
If we extend that to the end of the month, Rob?
Yeah, I'll extend that to the end of the month.
That means informing everyone that they have.
I'll contact all the people that I've been in contact with, that haven't turned something in yet and say that they have to the end of this month.
Are there any other questions for Rob or can we let him go? All right, Rob. You are no longer on the agenda, so I hope you go and enjoy yourself because I know it's your, it's an important day. Our next regular board meeting is November 2nd. Are there items the board has, would like to suggest to add to future board agendas? I see Judy and then Alicia.
Um, I would like, and I don't know when this would fit in our agendas, but an update on our safety plans and what's been put in place. I know there's a lot of parents and people that would be interested in hearing. You know, I know we have plan because we have a resolution for that. But you know, our, you know, what's happening in our schools specifically to make them safe for students? Because I think our public would like to know and I know there are things happening. Thanks. Oh, do I need to say someone else that would be interested in that? Maya, you're muted, but I think we had enough.
Okay, now I'm, I said there was technically two hand raises, two hands raised and that was Alicia and Laurel. So thank you Judy and on to Alicia.
Thanks Maya. I had a number of questions, so I just want to get clarity on this. I, I'm hoping we can get just a quick report back from superintendent about the number of new staff positions that have been added to for J admin. I know admin is a big number, so I think what we're looking for here is those that have been added. And I'm sorry, I don't know exactly how the categories are, you know, broken up, but I know we've added, you know, a new position in HR. I know we, Carrie's position has become two positions. So those positions that are in admin, particularly as they support superintendent and supreme. So Andy, it may be, is this going to have to go to leadership to get clarity? And the reason I brought it forward today is I'm in leadership next week. So we can, you can help me understand how that, how that looks and we can get the answer out. So there was a question about what the process was and how we did outreach internally and externally to hire these, these positions. Again, I'm hoping to get a couple of people to say yes on this and I'll be in leadership and we can, we can hammer it out if that's okay with everybody. Thanks.
Do we have, okay, I see Laurel and Judy have their hands raised to support that. Laurel, oh wait, Andy, do you want to respond to that quickly?
No, just a clarifying question. Are you interested in information about licensed administrators? Or everyone that might be with, under the umbrella of a, of a MAPS position?
I don't believe it's everyone under the umbrella of a MAPS position. It's in, you know, people might talk about that being, like I hate that term, but downtown, downtown in the administration office.
Specifically the Ed Center administrative increases.
Yeah, I think, I think that would be best, but if, if you think the full range would be good, great for that too. Just want to get some answers on that. So I have clarity. Thanks Andy.
Thanks Alicia. Laurel?
Yes, I would like to bring before the board, and I'm not sure exactly how to do this, but I have, and I've, I've mentioned this to, to some people in leadership and at the, at staff is that, well, actually I think I sent an email to the whole board saying, our, our meeting, our, I can't see the equity meetings, I can't see the school voice, the student voice meeting. And I know per public meetings law, any, any committee that is talking to the board and making suggestions to the board is a, is subject to public's meeting law. And we've already voted to put those, to put our meetings on the web. And last year we had quite a few meetings on the web, but we don't have them. And so I would like to see them, so I don't know exactly how to state this, but I would like to, I would, I, I guess we have to say as a board, the policy is to put the meetings on the web. I don't know. That we want all those meetings to be on the web? I would love to see the equity meetings. I'm excited about them, but I can't see them.
So, um, you try to frame that as something for the agenda or are you?
I wanted on a, it, it seems like it needs to be a discussion as the entire board to say we, this is something that we want, correct? And if it's not something that everybody wants, then, well, first of all, I think legally we have to. But so, how are we going, how does this look? What, how's it going to be done? And when is it going to be done? Because I, I still can't see them and I asked, I think over a week ago.
Okay, so, um, does that, does anybody want to indicate support for that?
I just have a clarifying question. So I, I don't know what our current policy is. I think maybe starting there would be good because I know we did record our legislative committee meeting.
And Judy, I think if I'm not mistaken, all of these meetings have been noticed and recorded. So maybe it's a question of in the Friday memo, giving folks direction on how to access them. I know that, that the ones that are in the future don't have to be noticed until 24 hours prior at, at a minimum. So maybe it's a question of just, I, I, I know, I know one of our goals is to have our, our website a little bit more navigable, navigable? Is that a word? I'm sorry, it's getting late. So perhaps the question is more providing links so that we can find them. I know people have referenced seeing them. People have joined them, so they've been accessible, but maybe not accessible enough.
I think there's a misunderstanding. I'm, I'm talking about seeing them after the fact. So if I'm at work, being able to, like I can go see board meetings and everything else, but I can't.
I, I understand. So what I, what I'm suggesting is perhaps we could start with a Friday memo that helps us track them down. Because I know there's times when I have a hard time tracking down regular board meetings as well. So if that doesn't end up sufficing, then we can move into another, move it into a conversation. But I think that, my understanding is that the, that, that the district staff is, is working through, looking at all of these things. Is that correct Andy? Okay.
So, I don't, I still don't know. So it'll go to the Friday, what is going to go to the Friday memo? I guess that's my question. Because I know exactly where board meetings are supposed to be and all subcommittee meetings are supposed to be and they're not there. So that's not my issue.
So I am, go ahead Andy.
Believe what you're asking for is clarity on what our obligations are for posting and recording and making available asynchronously, special committee and standing committee meetings. And I can look into what we might have fallen short on and clarify where all of those meetings are to be posted.
And I, yes, and if that is different than what is happening, then a vote to make those available. I guess that's, if there's something that's just happening in the matrix that needs to get fixed, I get that. But then if there's something that's happening where people have decided and benoted that it, that those are not going to be up on the web, then we have to vote as a board that we would like to have those up on the web, like we did for our board meeting.
Yeah, we wouldn't be able, we would just be in violation of, of public meetings laws if we didn't do that. And if we, if we are in violation, then it's important for us to acknowledge that and take immediate corrective action.
Right, this is, this is not up to us to vote on. Are there any other suggestions for future agenda items? Okay, then per our board working agreements, board leadership will review the agenda topics and discuss them at the next leadership meeting. You can expect to find meeting notes from all leadership meetings shared in our Friday memo. So everyone is aware of the discussion that takes place. Thank you, everyone. The meeting is adjourned at 9:50 PM. Have a great night.